Had to have high, high hopes for living. Shooting for the stars when I couldn't make a killing. Didn't have a dime, but I always had a vision. Always had high hopes. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Didn't know how, but I always had a feeling. I was gonna be that one in a million. Always had high hopes. Mama said, fulfill a prophecy. Be something great. Go make a legacy, manifest destiny. Back in the days, we wanted everything. Wanted everything. Mama said, burn your biographies. Rewrite your history. Light up your wildest dreams. Music and victories. Every day, we wanted everything. Wanted everything. Mama said, don't give up. It's a little complicated. All tied up. No more love. And I'd hate to see you waiting. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Shooting for the stars when I couldn't make a killing. Didn't have a dime, but I always had a vision. Always had high hopes. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Didn't know how, but I always had a feeling. I was gonna be that one in a million. Always had high hopes. Mama said, stuff the variety of stranger curses. Ain't never wanna be the winner. The novelties don't ever change. We wanted everything. Wanted everything. Stay up on that rise. Stay up on that rise. Never come down. Stay up on that rise. Stay up on that rise. We'll never come down. Mama said, don't give up. It's a little complicated. All tied up. No more love. And I'd hate to see you waiting. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Shooting for the stars when I couldn't make a killing. Didn't have a dime, but I always had a vision. Always had high hopes. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Didn't know how, but I always had a feeling. I was gonna be that one in a million. Always had high hopes. Mama said, stuff the variety of stranger curses. Ain't never wanna be the winner. The novelties don't ever change. We wanted everything. Wanted everything. Stay up on that rise. Stay up on that rise. Never come down. Stay up on that rise. Stay up on that rise. We'll never come down. Mama said, don't give up. It's a little complicated. All tied up. No more love. And I'd hate to see you waiting.
Oh, just some stuff that I don't think I'm gonna need now. Okay. I'd like to call the finance committee meeting to order at 5:16. Roll call. Tom Barney.
Here.
Eric Brown.
Here.
And Michael Loth, myself, I'm here. Item three, agenda revisions and approval.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item four, approval of minutes. Approval of the May 6, 2024 meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the May 6, 2024 meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, motion by Eric Brown, second by Tom Barney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item five, consent review and discuss, 5A, May vouchers. I know there's a couple questions. Brittany.
Am I on? Yes. I received about seven questions that I will review tonight. One of the questions we received was regarding the purchase of ten tables, ten training tables. It was not written that there was ten purchased in there, so it looked like there was one table purchased for a total of $3,150. There was ten, so that correction was made on our end.
Okay, very good.
Sorry for that. That was for Kennedy Middle School. The next question was regarding $1,521 paid to Lippert Tile for pool tile replacement. The question was regarding the ongoing issues that we've had with the pool tile. This is not pertaining to the pool tile. The issue we have with the pool tile is regarding the grout in the pool tile, and this was for actual cracked tiles throughout the gym, or excuse me, throughout the pool. If there are water bottles, because of the metal water bottles that students carry, we have now had signs posted on the pool, all over the pool, that the metal water bottles are not allowed in there, because if they drop, they break the tile. So they should not have those in there anymore, and this shouldn't be an issue, but other things happen and tiles break. So this is for that repair, not for the grout issues that we've had in the past.
Okay, very good. We did hear about that during the building tours. I just, you know, didn't know that that's what that was.
Mm-hmm. And I'm going to give an update at the next building committee regarding the agreement that we have with Lippert Tile on the, I'll give more detail at the next building committee regarding that. The next question that I received was regarding premier flooring. It was for GHS flooring. The question was regarding, did this go through the finance committee? It did not go through the finance committee. In January of 2023, we did have water damage at the high school. It was due to GSF staff leaving the water on and it being on overnight and flooding our high school. With that said, the work was done last summer, but it was going back and forth between insurance companies. So our portion was only about $7,000, and the rest of it was paid by us, but then reimbursed by GSF's insurance company. So with that, we did not bring, in the total, was over $15,000, you are correct, but with the portion of it being less than $7,000 for the district, it did not come to the finance committee. And the only reason that we had to pay for a portion of it was because the portion that was flooded was connected to another section that we were going to replace in the future anyway. We were going to replace the whole section, but the insurance company covered the portion that was flooded, and we just continued up the ramp that was on the lower level of the high school, and I believe that that was spoke about during your building tour as well.
I believe it was. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. The next question I received was regarding an invoice for $15,342.50 for Trevira LLC, which is the Google Workspace Education Plus. The reason that did not come to the finance committee was because this is the second year of a three-year agreement, and it did go to the finance committee in June, on June 6 of 2023, for the three-year agreement. So again, you'll see this amount next year, and it's not going to come to the finance committee again next year because of the agreement.
Okay, very good.
The next question I received was regarding invoice for $24,160 for the Department of Public Instruction, 2024 Educator Effectiveness. That, again, did not come to the finance committee, even though it was over $15,000. This is a software for evaluations. It is a direct reimbursement of a grant. School districts pay $80 per teaching staff.
Eight.
Eighty.
Eight, eight. Isn't it only eight dollars?
Well, I did the math and it.
Okay, I stand corrected. I apologize.
Otherwise, we have twice as many teachers as I thought we did. So I believe it's $80 per teacher, and it is for their evaluation program. School districts have to have it, so we pay the check and then they reimburse the exact dollar amount back to us. It's not really a choice that the district has to not have an evaluation, if I'm correct.
Yeah, it's part of the educator effectiveness program for evaluation of teaching staff.
Okay, very good.
The next question I received was regarding aluminum benches for GHS pool locker rooms. That was on a district credit card. The total was $3,232. When we had the referendum, there were benches installed in our locker rooms connected to the pool. About two years ago, we realized that the bottom of the benches were rusting the floor because of all the water that's in the pool area. So last summer, we disassembled those, and then our maintenance department tried to paint them with a type of paint that would not rust. That did not work. They started rusting again, so I said, we are just buying new benches. So we didn't buy the top of the bench, we just bought the legs of the benches. So that's what that was for. The next question I received was regarding a check for a wide range of items. The question was for check 4281, has several items, all with the same description. This is where the student activity accounts throughout the year, the district purchases stuff, and then the student activity accounts reimburse the district. So you can see that the check number only is four digits. That means that it is a check that was cut by the high school bookkeeper. If it was cut by the district, there is longer check numbers. So this is the student activity accounts instead of writing multiple checks throughout the year. They will write one big check to pay for their expenses back to the school district. If that makes sense. And then the final question I believe that I received was one regarding $500. It was listed as female golf, or no, sorry, the account number was under the function code of female golf, but the description didn't seem to match golf. Those were for Yeti coolers, and I believe those coolers are to hold water, so during the time in which they are out in the weather, they would have water to drink. So that's what that purchase was for, for that. And I believe those are the only questions I had, unless you have further questions.
I can't think of anything else. Sounds like the finance committee was hitting on all eight cylinders over the weekend. Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent to payment vouchers as presented and reviewed.
I will second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Nice job, Brittany, and I thank you for that. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay, next item is item six, and that is reports and updates, A, May variance report. Brittany Alton Dorf, please.
In front of the committee today is the May 31 monthly variance report. Due to the fact that the committee meeting is near the beginning of the month, we did not completely reconcile this month. We receive our bank statements within the first week of the month, so it usually takes us about a week to reconcile everything within the bank statement. So just be aware that this is not the complete final reconciliation for the May 31. There will be small adjustments, but nothing large. All checks are, show up in here, and the majority of the revenue, it's basically, we have not received our, we have not recorded, we have received, we have not recorded our interest on our bank statements, but the small items, so it's not going to make that big of a difference on the report. As of right now, the district has spent 38.5 million, which is about $1.6 million more than this time last year. This time last year, we spent about 36.8, 36.8 million dollars. And then revenue this time last year was approximately $110,000 less than this time last year. So in May of 2024, the district received about $33.6 million compared to May of 2023, in which we received about $33.5 million at that time. Some items that are still outstanding for the rest of the year, as we have one month left for the rest of the fiscal year, are our June, July, and August, which is our summer payrolls. So we do pay teaching staff June, July, and August, and July and August payrolls are charged back to June. So you can see that there is a larger outstanding amount in salaries, about the $5 million range, and that is for the next three months. That's not just for the month of June that you have outstanding. So you'll see those chargebacks throughout, or in your next report. Employee benefits is proj, is a little less than it was this time last year. Purchase services is consistent around the 60% range. We are still spending throughout the month of June, and we will continue to spend until July 15. Any invoice that shows up after July 15 will then be moved into the next school year, but anything July 15 and earlier will go back into the, the current school year. We are spending consistently in the special ed budget compared to the previous year, and then revenues, as you know, are coming in on a scheduled payment, so those are coming in pretty close to they were in the previous year. A little less like we've spoke about regarding property taxes. Property taxes are coming in a little slower than they have previous years, so we are expected to get the larger payment in August. One of the items that I spoke about at one of our last meetings was regarding the borrow we might need during the summer months due to purchasing the Redium curriculum, which is using a portion of our fund balance, as well as the delayed payments of property taxes, but we are not going to have to borrow for the month, for the summer months before we get property taxes. So that was good news in the world of the business office, that we are not borrowing again for summer. Any questions regarding the variance report from May 31?
No. Yeah, a couple things. On the first page, I was just, just curious, middle paragraph, operating revenues, near the end of that paragraph, you mention annually, there is a transfer of funds from the general fund to cover costs that are not covered with state and federal funds. This amount exceeds $5 million. The transfer will be reflected in the June variance report. So can, can you talk about that just a little bit? Five million is a large number to most of us.
Sure. So the special education budget is not allowed to have a balance negative or positive at the end of the year, so they, that budget receives federal funding as well as state funding grants. Anything that is not received or covered by that revenue then has to be covered by a transfer from the general fund. Obviously, the district expenses for special education is higher than what we receive in federal funds, so the, the general fund has to cover it. It's around the $5 million mark every year. They are trying to increase the amount we receive, or all districts, not just us, receive in federal funding for special education. It has increased, I believe, a few years ago, it was about the 25% range, and now it's 33.3%. And that is based on your previous year expenses. So you'd get 33.3% of whatever your previous year expenses is in the next year's aid amount.
Okay. And then just the last question. Last paragraph, operating fund balance, is the, the very last line mentions a negative balance of $4,849,000 and some change there. Is that what we're talking about when you say $5 million, or is that a different number?
That's a different number, and that's just a snapshot of when we looked at our fund balances of May 31. That's not the amount you have in your bank account, that's just the amount that we have on our general ledger at that point in time. So it's not like if we're in the negative on our general ledger, we don't have funds in our bank account to, to, to pay the bills that are coming in. It's just basically, and that has nothing to do with the, the transfers, it just seems to be a close number that month.
Yeah, right. Okay. So I think we talked about doing the variance report about a month late, so I think in the beginning of July, we won't really have a variance report, and then the beginning of August will cover the month of June?
Similar. So in the month of July, if I looked correctly, normally I would do my variance report for June. Sometimes I wouldn't have it in July because our audit isn't until August, so having one in July is not final. So sometimes I skip the month of July, which would make sense with the conversation that we had, even though our committee, I believe, is at the end of July, if I'm correct, for this coming July. But starting in August, you are correct, in August, I would normally do the end of July. But because we moved our committee meetings up a week, we will have the same issue where our, the business office won't have that month reconciled. So working with my chair, we are going to have a month lag. We would rather have a month lag information than information that's not correct. So in September, I will do July, and then everything will move forward.
Right, very good. Mr. Loth would like the numbers to be exact rather than an estimate each month, and exact in a month late, I think, is, is best. So that's what we're planning on doing. Okay, very good. I think we can move on unless anyone else has questions. Russ Ewerth.
I just wanted to say thank you for the hard work that led to not having to do the short-term borrowing, and also just the flexibility and the schedule and reporting to meet with the new meeting schedule. Thank you for that.
Right. Yeah, I think you, you did mention here that you didn't believe we would have to borrow for the summer session here, or?
Yeah.
Correct, I believe, yes, you're correct. Last month, I, we were projecting we weren't going to have to borrow, but we wanted to make sure as we were getting closer to the end of the school year, and with our projection to the year end, we don't, we're not going to have to borrow.
Okay.
It's not a belief anymore. We're not going to.
Okay, very good. All right, I think that concludes the May variance report. Let's move on. We do not have an item seven, unfinished business. Item eight, new business, 8A, 2024, 2025 preliminary budget, and that is Ms. Alton Dorf also.
Prior to July 15 every year, as I stated in the last agenda item, on July 15, we start spending for the next school year. So prior to July 15 of every year, we should have the board approve the preliminary budget. It is obviously not the final budget, that happens in October of every year. It is just giving us the authority to continue with business, so continue to receive revenue if it comes, and receive and expense and pay our invoices. So this is just the preliminary budget, it has a lot of assumptions in it, and it will be finalized throughout the months until the end of October, when the board approves, and the board approves the final budget. Because this, this is the second year of the biennial budget, there is a lot more known items than unknown items, so with the second year of the biennial budget, we already know the per pupil allocation, which is a very large number to know, a very important number to know. And we also know, as I stated, the special education funding, which is the 33.3%, we know it's going to be that. We don't know what the previous year expenses are because the year's not over. So we're projecting what the previous year expenses are based on what we're going to budget for the 33.3% of revenue next year. The other number that we also know is the dollar amount we are receiving for vouchers and open enrollment in-out students, even though we don't know the number of students. So again, there are a lot of projections in this budget, but there are more knowns than if it was the first year of the biennial budget. Items that we don't know at this time is obviously student enrollment, open enrollment counts, voucher counts, we don't know our final state aid, we don't know our final grant allocations, and we don't know our final insurance rates. Those are larger numbers that we don't know that are all projected within the preliminary budget. We have been doing the zero-based budgeting process since 2001. There are a lot of districts that are having to make larger cuts this year. We are not one of those districts that has to make larger cuts based on the way that we have done budgeting, the zero-based budgeting process for the last couple of years, which is very beneficial to our district. Some of the areas that I will go over in our, my presentation today are listed on your summary sheet. So open, or sorry, student enrollment right now, we're projecting to have 34 students less than we did the previous year. We're doing something a little different than we did the previous year. We are having the teaching and learning or curriculum department update what they believe the enrollment's going to be, they're projecting forward, what they believe their enrollment is going to be based on students that we have today, rolling them up, rolling them up, and also working with the sites on students they think that are going to be coming in next year. So we're doing that, we're just off a little bit based on some of the counts that we have to use when we calculate our membership versus the actual students that are in Skyward. So we're still figuring that out, but the 34 students is, we believe, a good projection. I believe that the 34 is going to be less than what it is. It's going to be less students. But right now, that's what the projection is. State aid.
Hey, Brittany and Eric.
Okay, just a clarifying question, the decrease of 34 students equals 44 full-time equivalent students. Kindergarteners count as half.
Kindergarteners count in half, but again, there's a, there's a open enrollment in, open enrollment out, the, the calculation that we have to do adjusts the FTE.
Okay.
So you're, you're absolutely right, that 4K students count as half in kindergarten, or, excuse me, 4K students count as a .6, and preschool or early childhood students count as a .5. So you are correct there. In reality, it should, that number should be less, but because open enrolled in and out students and 220 students and special education in and out students are taken into our calculation, it always doesn't come out to be less FTE than people.
Okay, that, that leads into my next question. Earlier this year, we approved 15 open. That number's in there also?
That number is currently in there.
Okay.
I think we projected a little less than 15, just in case that all of them didn't come in, as, as the board approved. So we are waiting.
They have until the end of the month to accept those seats as well, so letters have been sent. So that number, the full 15 seats were drawn.
Yep.
We're waiting to hear if they've accepted the schools we designated for those open kindergarten positions.
Okay. Just, just to be clear, that's 15 open enrollment in, I don't know if that, if you said the whole thing, Eric, just to be clear, 15 in. Is there any chance, I know the number you were looking for, Dr. Reuter was higher than that, is there any chance we can do more, should do more, or are we just fine with the 15?
I think we're fine with the 15, because they've been designated to one school, and based on class size policy, if all 15 or minimally six, except, we even our sections out. So we wouldn't want to take the gamble of offering more seats and then having too many kids and then looking for a teacher at the last minute.
Okay, very good. All right, now that we have completely derailed your thought, thought process.
It's okay.
I think we're good.
Then, upstate aid. So state aid in our projected, and I'll go through this later on, these are just some bullet points. State aid is projected to go up a little over almost 19%. I will go over that one, might go through the equalization aid calculation. Revenue limit per member, this was in the biennial budget, that we would receive $325 more last year than the previous year, and again, another $325 this coming school year over our current school year. It is built into the budget that you would get $325 on top of each year moving forward. But again, there's going to be a new biennial budget for '25, '27, and that could change. But right now, it's built in that you would get $325 on top of every previous year. So that would be great if that would stay in there, but again, it could change for next biennial budget.
And, and to be clear, and that, that's from the state, that's money from the state.
Correct, that's the state biennial budget.
Okay. Okay.
Um, the next item is, um, dental insurance and health insurance. Currently, um, looking at our projections, I have a zero percent built in for dental. We are under our current budget, and we're projecting to be under, um, next year's budget, based on the premiums that we've set. And the premiums are set to stay exactly the same as they are current year. And then, um, and again, please remember that this increase in health insurance is for the twenty-five calendar year. So health and dental are on calendar years, and obviously, we're on a fiscal year. So if we were projecting to see a twenty percent increase on health insurance in twenty twenty-five, I would only be budgeting a ten percent increase on health insurance, because I'm only taking six months of the twelve months that the twenty percent would be, just so you are aware of how the budgeting works there. Um, capital projects, as you are aware, we have been increasing our capital projects fund, which is Fund Forty-One, by fifty thousand dollars each year. Um, it would be our goal to increase that and then keep it at the six hundred thousand dollar range. A couple of years ago, we did reduce the capital project budget, and now we have been proj- um, increasing it by fifty thousand dollars each year. So next year, it would be, um, five hundred and fifty thousand, and that's what's built into this budget. Property evaluations, um, there is an average increase over all municipalities of an average of a seven percent increase. That is based on a bunch of different scenarios, um, based on previous years. That can change, that will not change our budget, that will change the property taxes and the, the, the mill rate and the, um, the levy. It will not change the overall, um, revenue or expenditures within our budget. Um, open enrollment in and out, we briefly spoke about this. I have a sixteen percent increase in, and I have a four percent increase out. The majority of that is, the in is the students for the four K that the board approved, and the out is keeping our out number flat. But because we are getting an, an amount, because the state set the in and out per pupil amount higher, that's what the, um, four percent is based on, just that increase, not the amount of students. The reason I didn't increase the amount of students is because, looking at our current year budget, we projected more students going out than did, so I wouldn't have an increase in out students if I didn't really reach the number that we already projected for this year. So the only increase in there is the actual dollar amount that the state increased it for the per pupil amount. And then vouchers, I briefly spoke about, this is vouchers for private schools. We are an in and an out, so we receive the same amount of revenue as we do, um, out. So it's on our revenue limit, property taxes pay for it, it comes into us, and then we spend the same dollar amount out, but it has to be built into our, um, revenue limit calculation. So that as, um, a, a history over the past couple of years is increasing then twenty-two percent, based on our past experience that we've had. Categorical aid, the majority of our stuff that we receive categorical aid on, it's, um, for example, transportation, library aid, those type of things don't drastically change, so right now, I have a built-in with a zero percent increase or a flat rate on any categorical, categorical aid that would change. And because it is the second biennial, they're not changing anything within, um, transportation or anything we would receive that on. And then finally, due to the fact that, um, we are projecting the decrease of the thirty-four students, uh, we see a decline in our enrollment, so you have a declining enrollment exemption, which the revenue limit gives you, because if a school district would have a drastic decline in enrollment, and they would have then a drastic decline in revenue, which a lot of school districts can't take on in a, in a one-year period. So the revenue limit calculi- calculation gives you a one-year exemption. That, um, is a very fine line, 'cause you could lose a couple students, then I lose the declining enrollment. But then if you lose a couple more students, you'd receive more revenue than you'd receive in your declining enrollment. So sometimes it's a good thing to get more students, but it might not be a good thing that year. It would be a good thing in future years, because if we hit the mark where we lose the two hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, declining enrollment exemption, you do not receive that much in revenue. So right now, it's in a good place, I know we're declining in enrollment in the projection, but if we would get more students, we could lose that, and then we would have a deficit right there.
And does, does filling those seats with vouchers affect that?
I'm sorry?
Does filling those, filling the seats with vouchers, open enrollment, does that affect that?
Vouchers, vouchers are the out.
Or is it just residents?
Yeah, vouchers are outgoing, I believe, correct?
So vouchers would be stu- well, it could be a combination. Vouchers could be students that would possibly be in our district and then go to a private school, that doesn't happen very often. It's more of when a current private school student becomes voucher-eligible, where we never had that student to begin with. I can't say the, the other doesn't happen, people could leave and go to a private school, but majority are when the school, the private school becomes a voucher school, then, um, but that's an in and an out. That does not, unless the student would leave us to go there and become a voucher student, I guess that could affect both of the buckets.
Okay, what about, what about the seats that we're filling with open enrollment from students outside the district?
The seat, yes, that's both, that's in the calculation for the revenue limit, so yes, that is true.
So if we accepted too many open enrollment ins, we could lose that enrollment exemption amount?
If we accept too many open enrollment ins, no, because the open enrollment ins are removed. I'll give you the easy math of this. So we take in September and January, I'm gonna use September as an example, we take on, um, account of how many students are sitting in our seats. Okay, then the calculation says everybody open enrolled in, we remove those from our, because we're not financially responsible for them, the other district is. Then everybody that open enrolls out of our district is now added back in to our count, because we are financially responsible to pay the other district for those students. So having open enrollment students come in would not necessarily affect us. Open enrollment students out, coming back in, could affect your declining enrollment exemption.
All right, so just to clarify that, if we accepted three hundred open enrollment in, that would, that number wouldn't change?
That number shouldn't change, because they're being removed from our calculation.
Yeah, thank you.
I went into a little more detail in that section than I planned to, so I probably won't go in as much detail in the rest of the slides, but I'd be happy to go in and answer any questions as I go through this. So the slides that you were, or the attachments that you are provided in your packet are four different attachments. Um, the general budget, the general, um, excuse me, the, the general budget and then the special education budget. The reason those are presented is because those are the majority of our operating budget. Um, so you see the, the general expenditures and revenue. Um, the first one, I believe, that's in your packet, is the general fund, um, revenue. Um, the bigger categories that are in there, I've already kind of touched based on, but you'll see that the open enrollment in increased, um, fifteen point thirty percent, if you're looking at the document. Um, that is due to this, the projection that I talked about previously, and bringing some of those students in, as well as the amount, um, per student going up. The next line you can see is a decrease of fifty-five percent. We did receive a nurse grant this year, do you have the document in front of me, in front of you that I'm referencing?
That's the first one, F- F-ten?
I'm sorry?
Is it labeled F-ten?
Well, they're all F-ten.
Oh, um, yes, it says, um, Fund Ten, Fund Ten, you should see it. They are, they're all labeled F-ten.
Yep, entered Fund Ten adjustments.
Hold on just one second, oh, yes. So yes, it says enter Fund Ten adjustments, and then you see revenue on the left-hand side, revenues?
Yep.
On the left-hand side, do you see that? Okay. Um, and, uh, so now I'm looking at the right-hand side, which is the current year budget. Um, so you see a decrease of fifty-five percent. We did receive a nurse grant this year, so obviously, we had to take the revenue as an expenditures out, because we received it this year, so we are not receiving it next year, so that's the decline in the fifty-five percent in that area. Um, you see an increase of equalization aid. That's just a portion of the state resources, so, but equalization aid is one of the largest part, parts of it. Other, other areas built in there are grants, and as of right now, grants, we're just rolling over, because we don't know those amounts right now. Um, we will know that final dollar amount on October fifteenth, so that will be updated at that point in time. The next eight, decrease of eighty-eight percent is Esser funding. So we are removing our Esser revenue, because it ends in September of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are pretty much spent out the majority of all our Esser funding, so I will be doing an update to the board um, regarding the final expenses for Esser in September. So that's why we, you see the decrease in that area. And then the other one is, um, miscellaneous. Um, school districts are allowed to put anything in, in the miscellaneous category that don't fall within another category. And you can see that there is a decrease for next year. We did receive fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance money due to the incident in October. Uh, we did use that money for, um, to increase safety within our buildings. We finalized our night locks, we bought window coverings, so if we have a lockdown, there would be, um, window coverings on all of our classrooms. Uh, we did, uh, purchase items for go-bags, we did, um, we a- um, added, um, what are they called, FOB access to KMS, they did not have a secure entrance, so we added that. Um, we increased some cameras throughout the district, so we used that funds of the fifty thousand dollars we received for the insurance. Oh, and we also fixed some of the items that needed to be fixed, um, on KMS, on the building of KMS. Sorry, Kennedy Middle School. Um, so we did use those funds for, um, safety, so we re- reduced that from the budget.
That's the, that's that thirty-five?
That is the thirty-five percent reduction. So if you look year over year, um, we have increased the budget from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, about one million dollars over the pre- over the current year. The next page you should have, I believe, would say Fund Ten adjustments, and it says expenditures on the left-hand side. Okay, some of the areas that I am going to go through, or I've already gone through. We did, um, oh, I missed that on the front of the thing, regarding the four point one-two percent increase. I believe that was on the first page during the summary that I might have missed. Um, so that is built into the budget of four point one-two percent increase for staff. Um, so you'll see that, um, as long as there, as well as there are, um, adjustments in staff, if there's turnover or staff leaving, um, what, or in hiring new staff, which we call attrition. Um, you also see in there a six point three-eight percent increase on benefits, that is all employee benefits, so that includes the health ten percent that I, um, spoke about earlier. Um, the other areas are pretty much status quo, so I'm not gonna go through those. And then you can see down further where it says total insurance and adjustments. Um, two of the areas that have increased our, are, our worker, workers' comp premium and our property insurance premium. Um, workers' compensation premium is based on a calculation, um, so that is not something that you can change. It is a calculation based on the three previous years of claims. We did have, what would we call, a good year fall off for the three-year rolling. Um, and we had, uh, this previous year, we had two work comp claims, not this one that we're in, but the previous year before that, twenty-two, twenty-three. We did have two higher work comp claims, so that year came on to our mod. So that calculation is not able to adjust, but that's built in there. And then property insurance, the quotes we received back, or the increase from our current vendor for property insurance was a large increase, so we are going out for market to see if we can get another insurance company um, to cover our property insurance, so we're still waiting for that, we should have those quotes back in June. So we'll make that decision, and hopefully, that dollar amount goes down. So again, previous to, or comparable to revenue, um, you can see that our budgets compared from this current year to twenty-four, twenty-five increased about a million dollars. Also included in here are the compensation study, um, adjustments from the compensation study that the district went through this current year. They go into effect on July one. Any questions regarding the general fund?
I think we're good.
Okay. The next page you should have is Fund Twenty-Seven, which is Special Education Fund, and revenues and expenditures should be on the same page. Okay?
That's it.
Um, again, the first item that you'll see, which we referenced in a different agenda item, is the transfer from the general fund to the special education fund, so it's projected to be about five point nine million dollars next year. Um, it was currently budgeted at five point seven million dollars this current year. Um, we aren't seeing that that five point seven million dollars is coming in exactly as budgeted, it'll be a little less than that dollar amount. Um, and then state and federal resources, again, those are referencing the dollar amount we received from the previous year expenditures and the grants we received for the special education fund. We don't know our final grant dollar amounts, but we are projecting them, so those will change prior to October. And then at the bottom of it, similarly to the general fund, um, you can see total salaries and benefits with increases to both of those. I do have to state that if there's reductions in the special education salaries, I currently have them built into the general fund, just because it's easier at the bottom of my sheet to plug them in there. They will be transferred as a reduction in special end when the actual final budget come through. Um, but currently, I do want you to be aware that they're in, in the general fund. So it might look like the general fund is reducing more than special ed, but it's not. And then finally, um, you can see that the, the expenditures and the revenues are matching, and, um, expenditures and revenues compared to the current year is going up about six hundred thousand dollars compared to the previous year. Any questions on special education? Otherwise, I'm briefly gonna go through the next two. I'm not gonna go through the complete detail of the equalization aid and revenue limit, I just wanna get some pointers.
Yep, I think we're good so far.
Okay, so the next one, I believe, that you should have, on the upper left-hand quarter, should say equalization aid. Um, so I stated earlier that equalization aid, or maybe I did not state earlier, but equalization aid is based off of previous year expenditures. It's based off of our district's previous year expenditures, as well as all the other districts in the state of Wisconsin's um, previous year expenditures. Obviously, those are unknown at this time, so we project as well as we can what we think the expenditures are going to be of us, as well as other school districts. Um, recently, we have to upload our financials to the state of Wisconsin a few times a year, and all other school districts have to do this as well. So projecting what the expenses, expenses, projecting what the expenses are going to be, and what our aid is going to be next year, is a lot more accurate than it has been in previous years, because all the school districts are uploading their information throughout the year. Before, we were just guessing based on off-budget, and now we are guessing a little better based off, um, the information that they're uploading.
The marching, the marching band's walking back.
Right. Um, the equalization aid and the, um, is one of the legs of the federal funding formula, so this isn't necessarily something that we can control. Um, it is, like I stated, based on our enrollment and our previous year expenditures. So you can see on the second page that our in, that we are projected to go up in, um, equalization aid revenue. I said earlier that it was the eighteen point eight-one percent. Um, it is on the line, almost down at the bottom of the second page, it's called October fifteenth certification of aid. We did increase from two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four by two point five million dollars, and we are projected, um, to go from two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, about three million dollars. Again, that's a projection, so that might change prior to October. It's again, based on everybody's, um, spending throughout the state. One thing that the school district and board has been trying to do is we created, um, debt payments, where we are paying more debt every other year, um, and that, this equalization aid is why we do that. Is, at the bottom of this page, you can see there's primary, secondary, and tertiary aid. We are a school district that receives negative tertiary aid. So you, school districts receive funding, um, first you receive primary aid, obviously, then the next tier, based on your spending, you receive secondary aid, and then based on your spending, again, you can receive positive or negative tertiary aid. We are receiving negative tertiary aid. We probably won't be a district that gets out a negative tertiary aid, but you can see, um, by altering our debt payments every other year, we are decreasing that. So we are receiving more aid each year. Um, and then aid and property taxes make up the majority of our revenue. If one goes up, the other one usually goes down, so increasing our state aid would increase our property taxes that we have to, um, receive from the community. Questions on equalization aid? Okay, and then my final, um, item, I believe you have in. Okay, and then my final item, I believe you have in front of you, is the revenue limit calculation. I'm not going to go over this in detail. More than likely, it's going to change. I'm going to guarantee you it's going to change. So right now, we have built in the enrollment. We have built in the summer school dollar enrollment. You can look at the last page of it, and it basically says that our property tax, or you can see the equalization aid in there on line twelve A. That's the twenty point four million dollars that you saw on the previous item. If you look down a little for, further, it says that our general operations levy is going to be the twenty-three point nine million dollars. That is less than the previous year, and it's less than the previous year, because you can see that the equalization aid above is larger than the previous year. Does that make sense? Yep, okay. So it says right here on line fourteen A that we are going to receive less in property taxes than we did in the previous year. That's that line. If you look further down, also in there, which is called outside the revenue limit calculation, is debt. So referendum debt and non-referendum debt and capital improvement, which is Fund Forty-One, is considered outside the revenue limit. So if you get authority from your property taxpayers, which is basically going out for referendum, getting approval, then that is outside, but you get the authority to put it in, in the revenue limit calculation, even though it's not part of the inside portion of the revenue limit calculation. It's confusing, but basically, if the community does not approve any type of referendum, you wouldn't have anything on the bottom of this page, and you'd have the authority to get that first number. Because the community says, yes, you can get more money, it's considered outside the revenue limit. So, and in total, the total revenue with all that included, you do see goes, increases to the forty-four million compared to the forty-one million the previous year. But that's including our debt payments and our strategic plan to pay off more debt than the previous year. Questions regarding the revenue limit? Or any of the rest of the budget? Otherwise, this will come back in October. On October twenty-fourth, I believe, is the annual meeting and budget hearing.
Okay. I plan for the full board meeting on the Cliff's Notes version of this, and redirecting everyone to the finance committee meeting for these details. So we'll cover it quick in the full board meeting. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good unless there's any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
Second.
Okay, motion by Eric Brown and second by Tom Barney to approve the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five preliminary budget. Any, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries. We're on to item eight B, monthly purchase requests exceeding fifteen thousand dollars.
Sorry, before we move on, would it be more proper to recommend to the board, or to send a positive recommendation to the board for the preliminary budget?
I think we should. Sometimes that text gets added to the full board meeting agenda, and, you know, in between then and now, but it's tonight, it's later. So, yeah, I think we should do a positive recommendation.
Well, properly, do we need to make, make a motion to rescind the approval that we just did?
Well, I think, I think the fact that we just approved it in finance means it's automatically a positive recommendation.
Correct.
So a lot of times, I, at the full board, I simply add the text. It might not be in our packet, you know, for finance, but it's often tweaked a little bit in the full board packet. So occasionally, you might notice that what I read, because I'm working off of my notes from the finance committee meeting, is just slightly different than what you're seeing in the full board packet. You know, it, it does happen, because the packet gets, often gets added. So I think, I think we're okay.
You want to leave it, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
What was the motion that was approved? Was it as written?
It was as written. Yeah, this, this kind of happens all the time, where it doesn't necessarily say positive recommendation.
The, the as-written motion doesn't say to send it to the full board. And I missed that. Motion as written is motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
It's, um, item six B on the full board. I, I'm not disagreeing. I just know it's item six B. It's in my notes for what's upcoming at seven P M.
That I understand, but if it was as written here, you didn't, it wasn't motion to the full board. It was just motion for approval.
I think this happens often in finance. I mean, if, if we go back to last month, you know, there were, we approved a lot of items in the finance committee. Motion is just slightly different with usually the text, uh, motion to the full board with a positive recommendation, and that, that positive recommendation, I think possibly the full board text is not always there in finance. You know, it's, it's one of those things I usually work off my notes from this meeting, but if I compare to the full board, uh, notes, I don't reread everything that's on the full board agenda, because it, it's, it's nearly identical to this.
Yeah, my, my, just my recommendation is this wasn't even, if it was as written here, was not even motion to the full board. It may have been added. I'm not part of the motion, so.
No, right now, we're not sending anything to the board to approve for later.
Great, I would, I would recommend you rescind the vote or the recommendation and then.
My, my stick along this is not whether it's a positive recommendation or not, it's that it wasn't motion to the full board, which is what your intent is to do.
Correct.
Yeah, the last one, uh.
But I under, I understand what you're saying.
It's, it's written better in that regard. So, uh, we can.
I'll make a motion to rescind the finance committee approval of the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five preliminary budget.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to rescind by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Aye? That motion carries. Okay, so, so what do you want to change it to? I've got to write it down now for the, what, what I would have said is, uh, uh, motion to the board with a positive recommendation to approve the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five projected budget.
Preliminary budget.
Uh, no, it doesn't even, it doesn't say preliminary, does it?
Yeah.
Yep.
You are correct.
It says preliminary. I believe it should say motion to approve of the pocket, positive recommendation to the full board to approve the twenty, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five preliminary budget.
Correct.
And then I believe that the board packet has the correct motion, which says a positive recommendation from the finance committee. I believe that is correct in there.
Yes.
That could have been my error.
Okay, my computer is not open. Do either of you?
I'll make a motion to bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation from the finance committee to approve the twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five preliminary budget.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. I will, uh, read from or correct the finance committee meeting notes in the intermission we're probably going to have here. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, item eight B, monthly purchase requests exceeding fifteen thousand dollars in purchasing slash project bid results. B one is twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five desktop and Chromebook replacement. Normally, that would be covered by Jeff Crawford, but in his absence, excused Brittany Altondorf will be handling that for us this evening. Thank you, Brittany.
You're welcome. Today, we are coming for the approval of the finance committee to go to full board to approve the purchase or the financing of six hundred and fifty Chromebooks, for student Chromebooks at a unit price of two hundred and forty-eight, with the additional Chromebook educational license for each Chromebook at twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and also the replacement of sixty-one HP four-hundred desktops for an individual price of five hundred and sixty-seven. The technology department did go out for bid for this, and they received three bids back. They are recommending to go with two different vendors. Going with the two different vendors gave the best price on both of the items, the desktops and the Chromebooks. Not putting them together was not a better price, so that's why we are recommending two different vendors. This would be a four-lease agreement, four-year lease agreement, as we, as we have done in the past. Again, these are replacing the ones that are being sent back in July. We did recently on Friday receive the bids back for the financing, because it did say in the motion that financing would be included if we do go out for a four-year borrow on this, which we normally do. We received three of them back, one of them for Providence, the other one for American Capital, and the other one for U.S. Bank. Providence with a total amount, if the finance and the board approve it, it's for the two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. That would be a four-year payment of fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars per year. So that is the lowest interest rate we could receive, and then after the four years, we would have a dollar buyout. The current year that's expiring, we would not have a dollar buyout. It's not built in that lease that's expiring, so we are not keeping those laptops. It would be our goal to, at the end of this four years, to keep those laptops, because they should be able to last longer than the four years, or because the students are paying for the laptop fee, they would be taking them with them when they graduate.
Okay, or is the, uh, motion here good as written? Do we have to mention anything about four years or?
Nope, it's good as, it's good as written.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the purchase of six hundred and fifty Chromebooks from BDJ Tech for one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and sixty-one desktops from TKK Electronics for thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars, totaling two hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents plus financing. Charge the appropriate capitalization and lease accounts in the general fund.
And I will second.
Okay, motion by Tom Barney, second by Eric Brown. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries. And I will accept one last motion.
Make a motion to a jury?
Second.
Okay, motion by Eric Brown, second by Tom Barney. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned at six seventeen P M.
Agenda revisions and approval? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
I have a sec, first and a second to approve. Any questions, any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes, the April eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes.
Second.
And we have approval and a second, approval by Kim, second by Tracy. Any discussion? Hearing none? That will pass. We'll move to reports and updates.
How about we vote?
How much?
How about we vote? You got to vote.
Want to vote on that? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes is done. We'll move on to reports and updates. And we'll start with teacher resignations, and Mr. Mike Nowak.
Thank you. We have four resignations to bring forward this evening. This is a little different in that three of the resignations are, are based upon, in this case, teachers being offered a regular contract to be renewed, and then indicating that they are, their intention not to come back for next year. Quite often, when we bring resignations to the board, it's a matter of being inside of a contract period and, you know, us talking about liquidity damages, those kinds of things. This is different in that the, these individuals have just said for various reasons that they're not coming back. We've had discussions with some, not all at this point, and we know that they have, in, in most cases, personal reasons that they're, they've made the decision not to be back.
Okay, is that it for resignations then?
Yes.
We'll move on to teacher contracts. Oh, any questions? Sorry.
So the four of them are expiring short-term contracts that were going to be offered, or three?
Three of the four were, um, expiring contracts, regular contracts that were to be offered. The other was a limited-term contract, which sunset early.
So the contracts reached their natural conclusion, they chose not to read?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, we'll turn back to Mr. Michael Nowak for teacher contracts.
Thank you. As you can see, you have many teacher contracts in front of you. These, the vast majority of these are, are limited-term contract positions. In other words, they're people who we brought in, in some cases, back to the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, in some cases, in late August, and our preference at that time was to offer a limited-term contract as opposed to regular. Some of these positions occurred during the school year. For example, there might have been a resignation, and we filled it for, in one case, it was January through the remainder of the year, varying lengths throughout. But the, the, underneath the comments section for rationale, if it indicates transition from a limited term to a regular contract, it means that we're basically, we've, you know, seen this person teach, we've, with administration, have made the decision to offer them a contract moving forward, and that's what we're doing at this time. And what that means for us, and it bridges into the discussion of teacher negotiations, because technically, those limited-term contracts are not part of the salary increase pool. So. So we have to reengage with them relative to negotiating, negotiating an increase. Now, in most instances, what we did is we look at salary. We, we looked at how long the person was with us. If they were with us for half a year, we tried to gauge the offer to be around half of the amount that was the negotiated increase. So it was prorated. In some cases, teachers were there for the whole year. We tried very hard to offer that, that negotiated salary increase in full in that scenario. So, and it's important to point out, i- in cases where their salary may have been at, you know, say forty-two thousand or forty thousand, we assumed the comp study projection of forty-seven, five hundred and the added negotiated increase. That's why you see the salary amounts that you do.
Understood, any questions?
So then, sorry. So then when I see this fifty thousand, four eleven and eleven cents, chances are those were the first-year contracts with both of those numbers taken into account?
Correct, and I, that's the number that does seem to appear often, yeah.
So they went from forty to fifty-four, eleven and eleven cents?
Forty-seven, well.
Well.
Correct, wherever they were, they went to that forty-seven, five hundred mark and then got the negotiated increase.
I'm just, these were, these people were under a contract before the forty-seven five.
Correct.
So now we're getting that plus the four point two one, which comes where we get this number.
Yep.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll move on to staffing update. That's you again, Mike.
Thank you. We're providing a staff update, staffing update. And this is the first time we've used this process at the conclusion of a school year, which adds a little bit to it relative to, this is a time when, for example, some aides make the decision to retire. It's a logical time or to, to conclude their work. Sort of a, a natural breakpoint, if you will. Likewise, for teachers, as we just saw with contracts and resignations, it's a natural time. So the staffing update, the first section of it presents current administrative positions and teaching positions that are open. As you know, with Dave, David Smith assuming the role of high school principal, we now have an assistant principal vacancy. Also, as you know, we had two elementary principal positions that have been filled. You're aware of those, so we didn't obviously include those in the staffing update. In terms of teaching vacancies, you can see them listed. At the moment, at the current time, and I wanna give some explanation to this, we're looking at high school Spanish teacher, high school social studies teacher, and ELL teacher at the district level, a speech-language path at the district level, a part-time elementary music teacher. The Amy Bell Elementary Physical Education teacher is seen in new contracts. So at the time when this was created, that position was vacant. Literally, late last week, we filled it, so that's filled. Kennedy Middle School is looking at special, looking for special, special education teacher and a tech ed teacher. The next section.
Hold on, I think we have a question regarding that.
Russ? So those two at KMS that were, are vacant right now? That's, that's in the natural works of the summer progression?
Yes.
To fill? Do we have any perspective?
Yeah, we've, we've had some candidates apply with the tech ed position. We weren't in a position where we felt comfortable moving forward. We are in the process, and Dr. Reuter may be able to speak to this a little bit, of, of looking at candidate for the tech ed position. It's unique because certification for tech ed and the middle school in terms of what this position will be doing is a little bit different. So we're trying very hard to make it work. And some of that relies on us looking very closely at licensure and, and how we can make that work.
Yeah, we have two candidates right now that Mrs. Guerin shared with me that I was working with DPI this morning to look at licensure for tech ed and Project Lead the Way courses. And as that's not a position that many people hold the licensure and come from the outside, you know, private sector field, and there's different venues to gather the correct licensure to be certified, which we have to provide a report annually to DPI related to that our employees we have here meet all the qualifications. So we're working through a few things in the next couple of days and then hopefully we'll be able to offer a candidate that position.
Just to clarify with that, there's state licensure through DPI. And then Dr. Reuter referenced Project Lead the Way would be certification. That's separate from the state, but our teachers need to be certified through Project Lead the Way to teach those courses. So that's the challenge that we're faced with, but we feel confident we're going to get a viable candidate.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll move on to the staffing update part of it then?
Yeah, so the, the, the next part deals with support staff. And that's more in line with what we've seen in the past relative to positions and changes. I would note that there are custodian vacancies at GHS. Those are positions for, my understanding is for the field house. And they're, it's not a new position, if you will. It's sort of reallocation from our outsourced custodian group to custodians being with us. Other things of note, people, situations of note are food and nutrition supervisor. We interviewed late last week and we, Sol Dorf and I spoke this afternoon. We're in a position that we would like to hopefully move forward with a candidate tomorrow in terms of speaking with them. We also are seeking a CNI coordinator position. This is our, for Julia Leeson, who's leaving us for the teaching and learning director position in Grafton. We wish her well, it's a great position for her. As has been the case, special education aides, as we look to the new year, will be a focus. We have a number of retirements in that area and we'll work actively to get those filled.
Just for context, how many aides, special education aides do we have at Kennedy Middle School?
At Kennedy?
Yeah.
Off the top of my head, I don't know. My guess is in the ballpark of ten to twelve. I can get that info.
Is that including these five that have left? So it'd normally be fifteen to seventeen?
My quick thought is it's probably a dozen total, but I, I could be wrong on that. I wanna get clarification.
We've also consolidated, you see the open special ed position? Mrs. Guerin consolidated retirements of special ed aides. And Ms. Aldorf, correct me if I'm wrong, but three and a half full-time aides. Would equal one teacher from a budgetary standpoint. So the idea was to add another special ed teacher and reduce the number of aides, which then helps our staff with smaller caseloads. And we have hired qualified people working with students with IEPs.
Got it. Any questions? Mike?
Yeah, I was wondering about the custodians. Are those moving to daytime positions then rather than overnight? Is that why we need them for the field house?
Ms. Aldorf, do you wanna speak to that?
I'd like to go back to the other question. Special ed aides at Kennedy Middle School, we have ten, which equates to seven point three FTE.
Which is down from fourteen this previous year with that consolidation piece when I look at last year's report.
That's projected for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So we need to hire about half that?
So there's.
These five leaving.
I'm sorry, so there, there was fourteen FTE or fourteen staff?
I'm sorry, staff.
Okay, so fourteen staff in the current year, correct?
Correct.
Our projection for next year is ten staff?
With the addition of an FTE.
Excuse, yeah, you're correct. So the four reduction would be the teacher that they're hi, they're hiring, that they have available. So did he just state there were five leaving of that?
I, I just, I was looking at this.
Okay.
I, I can tell you that the, as they're listed as vacant, what's, what's coupled with that is what Dr. Reuter and Sol Dorf are talking about in terms of, in some cases, well, not hiring them all. We're not going to exceed what we have. We're going to balance aides with the hire of a, a new special ed teacher to make it a wash.
Got it.
A special ed teacher will eat up four of these.
Correct, yeah.
Got it.
And then regarding the other question that you had, the, the two FTE for the, we're calling it the athletics area. So it would cover the field house, the main gym, the multipurpose room, the offices in the athletic department, as well as the pool area and any area within there and the restrooms in that area would be two FTE. They would work a third shift, second, third shift. I think we have them coming in around the one-thirty-ish, two o'clock time and they'd work eight hours from then. The GSF or outsourcing contract would then be adjusted, which we're working with them on. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Very good.
Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. That takes us to item number seven, employee handbooks. Mr. Mike Nowak for that.
Thank you. So this is the time of the year when we begin to bring forward any handbook changes that we're seeking. As we are doing so tonight, we're doing it in a similar format to what we did last year relative to providing you with the handbooks, providing you in this case with a color coding process of things that would be taken out, additions, modifications. In most of these cases, the language changes is really about clarification. In some cases, maybe paring down language so it's more easily understood. There are some instances where there are some legal guidelines that we're making certain of what, that what we have kind of speaks to what it needs to. But I think the best process would be to go through these, you know, on a, on a case-by-case basis and, and answer questions accordingly. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
The first one is about leave of, leaves of absence. I would just give the background here that this has come up a few times throughout the past one to two years. So the clarifying language should help in terms of directing employees and working with employees when these, these situations arise. It asks us to, what we're requesting here is that the language that you see be struck and that they're referred to sections eight and nine of the handbook force, information regarding paid and unpaid leaves of absence.
This section was redundant and there's a whole leave section, so that's why we reference eight and nine versus stating it multiple times. And there was some, how do I say it? Non-like language that contradicted each other. And as we've had leave of absence throughout the year, it's, we need a clear cut in one spot that doesn't contradict.
Question, go ahead, Russ.
The recommendations that we're reviewing right now, we're seeing right now, are these coming from administration?
Yeah. Between Mike, Brittany, myself, and the people that process the work relative to payroll benefits, you know, when there's questions that arise in unique situations, they bring forward to us, this is what the handbook says, but there might not be enough specificity or it's open to interpretation.
Well, we have conflicting language.
Or we've had conflicting language based on the main page to the actual either administrator handbook, teacher handbook, or support staff handbook. So we're trying, we did a full audit with all three departments to walk through and see where those discrepancies that we kept track of during the year. We could either provide clarity with detail or we eliminated information that was redundant or contradicting.
So the administrative staff did a rev, review of the information and are making these recommendations?
Yep, between HR, Business Office and my office.
Yeah, and the way this, in that, like, last week, Dr. Reuter and I met with three representatives from administrative support to talk through these. The, the way this often plays out is over the course of a year or semester of time, we may encounter these. Sometimes we need to take immediate action and we'll bring it to personnel on an isolated basis. But sometimes we kind of put them away to say, okay, when the time comes for the yearly update, we'll include these.
The natural break of the summer would be a good time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next section deals with paid leave. This is, has to do some with Skyward, which is our employee management system. And it's, you can see it's asking for language to be struck. Fairly simple, straightforward. The next one, page fifty, deals with restriction. The no leave of absence shall be granted for the purpose of seeking other employment. There's language that's struck. And then there's language, a pretty significant amount of language that's added, which gives us clarification in terms of processing and in terms of speaking with staff who these situations, who, who run into these situations. As you review it, do you have any questions in those sections?
Mike, you can probably proceed here.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at, the next section is, is, is an important one that has caused a lot of, we've had a lot of discussion about it over the course of the last few months. And that is cash in lieu of insurance and eligibility. As you look at the language that's there, there's the added language. And I really wanna go through the first part of that green section. In order to receive cash in lieu benefit, the employee must demonstrate coverage through an employer-sponsored group health insurance plan and not enrolled in the ACA exchange and are not eligible for Medicare. Federal law prohibits anyone on Medicare from receiving a cash-in-lieu benefit. In addition to this language, when people are seeking cash in lieu, we now have them fill out a form in which they have to sign off that they're not, in, in this case, receiving Medicare or some other type of non-employer-based health insurance. In this case, like ACA is referenced, anything government subsidized. That law exists because the federal side of things, if we're offering an incentive. if we're offering an incentive for them not to be on ours and they're choosing the, um, government-assisted plan, um, there's a big problem with that. So this additional language safeguards us in that regard, uh, and we feel very strongly it needs to be in there. Um, the next part deals with health savings accounts, um, I, I won't go through that word by word, but some of it deals with, um, the employee's responsibility to enroll, um, and it's kind of take action on it. When someone is on HSA, we put money into their account and if they don't sign up, um, it's delayed and it's problematic. So, um, there's a piece of that go- that goes in. Um, anything, Dr. Reuter, you want to share there or?
I'd just say as you look at those employees we bring in, um, maybe mid-year and if they don't, they're, they're told and they're onboarding that they need to set up, um, their HSA account and if it's not set up by the next payroll, contribution can't be made, so it's, it's hindering then payroll's contribution that it could go months without the employee setting it up, so this just states you have a responsibility and if you don't ma- meet that timeline, we won't be, you'll be forfeiting that HSA contribution.
Until you, until you set it up.
Correct.
Once it's set up, then we would.
Correct.
Um, the next section deals with, um, voluntary retirement savings plans. Um, this would be, uh, traditional four oh three Bs and Roth four oh three Bs through our designated vendors. Um, the change in that over, I think, over the last three years, we moved to a, um, um, what do we call it?
Virtual based?
What was it?
Virtual based?
No, uh, no.
Yeah, third party administrator.
TPA, third party administrator, um, and the language here speaks to that, that, that's vast majority of districts, right, Ms. Altendorf, use third party administrators and so the language here, um, kind of clarifies that for us.
It spells out our third party administrator, worse before is open to any administrator or your.
Third party administrators are used to follow the IRS rules and that makes the district not responsible, that if somebody would fund it more than the IRS states they can, we want to be responsible for that. The third party administrator manages that. That's why it's good to have a TPA.
Questions there? Okay, moving on, um, uh, the, now we're talking about administrators handbook and, um, clarification. The language that we add deals with retirement, retiring administrator who meets these requirements will be eligible to receive the district post-employment benefit plan until he or she reaches the age of sixty-five or until he or she becomes eligible for Medicare, Medicaid and then the benefit will cease. Survivorship part of that, in the event that the retirees, uh, of the retirees' death prior to exhaustion of this benefit, the district will continue its contributions in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder, um, of the retiree's benefit. So we currently, currently do, um, you can see the language that was struck below, um.
It was done to mirror, it's the same language for the teachers, for whatever reason, the same benefit process was laid out in two different formats, so use consistency of language in the handbook.
Yeah.
We mirrored that.
We believe, and we don't necessarily know this, that, um, the reason, the difference is, is that prior to all of us, changes occurred with different handbooks and it just, what it did was create some inconsistency in language. So this sort of brings us, brings it together. Next part deals with.
Yeah, hold on, um, sticking with the, the current item, so the new language is until he or she reaches age sixty-five or becomes eligible for Medicaid, Medicare and then the benefit will cease.
Yeah.
Then the new language for survivorship is that in the event of the retiree's death, the spouse will get to continue it for the remainder of the retiree's benefit. But nowhere in there are you saying that once the survivor gets to be Medicare or Medicaid eligible, that the benefit would cease. So if you've got a spouse who's ten years younger, are they going to get to keep?
To, to the age of the original.
No, it's the age of the person who received the benefit, so you're, the retiree passes away at age sixty-four and had one more year of eligibility, their survivor would only have that year of eligibility.
Right, but what if their survivor is already Medicare or Medicaid eligible?
Then.
Based on their age.
They have to take that, so they wouldn't.
But that's not in our language.
It, it would cease.
It would cease.
The benefit would cease, it's, it's the employee's, um, benefit and, um, I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, but he's correct in pointing out that, given the reason we're making a bunch of these changes tonight as language issues, it wouldn't be the worst to add, that's that, that's unless, unless.
I think it's something that's missing from the language, that if the, the spouse gets to continue the benefit, but they shouldn't be able to continue the benefit because they're already Medicaid or Med- Medicare eligible, it's not.
It should, and it should.
I think we can add language, but it does say for the remainder of the retiree's benefit, which that's defying.
Correct, so if the retiree. But if the benefactor of it is not eligible because they already are on Medicare or eligible for Medicare, that would, that would nullify what the benefit was originally.
So in that piece, to your point, Mr. Barney, we could say in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder of the retiree's benefit unless Medicare eligible.
Well, the, the, the only other add-on to that, you brought it up, is the opposite in, in which case the, um, spouse is much younger and that's, that's a real, um, possibility too.
Yeah, but if they're much younger, then they're only eligible, they're only eligible till the original.
Right, but the, the last sentence of this, the language that you're striking covers what I'm talking about. You say, or until the spouse attains Medicare, Medicaid eligibility.
Sure.
So you're striking out the language that covered my concern.
Do we add it back?
So you'd recommend we remove the survivorship language we added and reapply that final paragraph?
Not, not necessarily, I mean, I don't want to completely change everything you're doing, but I think the, the new survivorship language appears to be missing.
Can I?
Yeah.
So the portion where it struck, uh, the last paragraph in red, um, comma, I would start with, a surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue participation in the group health plan until the ninety-six months expires or until, so that is where you have to get specific on what the new benefit is compared to what the old is, but the language of a surviving's, surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue participation in benefit or until the spouse, spouse attains Medicare, uh, Medicaid eligibility, period. So I think you just have to weed out the ninety-six months issue.
Sure, um.
And then I cover, I think that covers both of what you're talking about, Tom?
Yeah, I, I think for the sake of tonight, do we, um, propose it now and put it in or do we bring it forward in early July, early July?
I would be for bringing it, doing it tonight.
Okay.
We can do it in there.
So you were, could you restate what you're proposing in the event, so in the.
So the green language you have is good. And then it should say, I want to go here, starting with, a surviving.
Yeah.
A surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue participation, or shall be, uh, permitted to continue the.
The benefit?
The benefit provided or until the spouse attains Medicare, Medicaid eligibility, period. I think that's it, right?
Okay. So we leave the survivorship on page four that we added, so I'm going to read this in totality of the two put together. Survivorship, in the event of the retiree's death prior to exhaustion of this benefit, the district will continue its contributions in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder of the retiree's benefit. A surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue participation in the benefit provided or until the spouse attains Medicare, Medicaid eligibility by payment of the premiums to the board subject to the rules of the carrier.
And what, do we, are we missing the language of to protect on the other side that the original benefactor to the age of sixty-five?
That's in the first part on, under.
No, but I'm saying in regards to how it affects the spouse and the result of a death.
No, because I believe the paragraph before would supersede that it only lasts until age sixty-five.
Yeah, for the employee, but then under survivorship, you probably need to have that in there, clarifying language. It's also six.
Well, it says in the same manner to the surviving spouse, so it, it, you know what I mean? The paragraph before clarifies that.
Okay.
We'll make that edit then.
So good.
Sorry, you can have your committee back.
That is fine.
We, moving forward, we have some that are fairly straightforward. Um, the first one deals with severance pay and as you look at it, you, if you look close, you can see there's the addition of the word sick about halfway through, um, relative to accumulated leave days. It used to just read, uh, for all unused accumulated leave days and adding in that clarifier of sick signals that those are part of that, um, they're to be included. Um, that's, question has come up, so a fairly simple switch there. Um, good with that, moving on, the next section deals with contracts and, um, particular liquidated damages. Our contracts this year include a modification of li- to liquidated damages and we're noting it here of, um, June fifteenth, changed to one thousand dollars after August first, changed to two thousand and off first, after September first, um, this would be during the school year. Well, that, after September first, let's put it as that, um, there's a forfeit of, um, should be four thousand dollars. It should read four thousand dollars.
I'll make that change.
Yeah, okay, and then, um, moving on, retirement, um, there's a retiring staff member who meets these requirements will be eligible to receive, um, health insurance at the same rate as actives, the change there is to note it as the district post-employment benefit, which signals, um, I, I guess movement to handbook language of post-employment benefit plan, so there's consistency there. Dr. Reuter, do you want to say anything to that?
No, I was just that since we changed the plan, it used to have insurance specifics, so we reference the plan now that the board approved versus just in, insurance.
Right.
Yeah. Um, the next change is something that is, um, has been acted on before, but as we dug through handbook, we noted there was still reference to a point five. Um, the language now sh- now supports us not having in professional technical salaried employee at the point five FTE or more, that should be, uh, we should strike that. Um, moving forward.
Real quick, I think you need to strike the word or in there also.
Okay.
Hours per week will be.
Yeah. Okay, um, vacation, um, professional technical shall have four weeks of vacation. Vacation days will be prorated based on the total number of workdays annually. Where this comes into play is some of our professional technical staff, um, are not year-round, um, and it's, it's not appropriate for them to have, um, the same amount of vacation as year-round staff. So dealing with this, us dealing with this on a individualized basis with the note, note of we're prorating allows us to do so.
Yep, so if, uh, if a professional technical employee is two hundred and sixty days, they would receive the full four-week vacation, but let's say they're two hundred and twenty days, we'd prorate that down to by point one or whatever that number would be so that the benefit reflects the number of days versus everyone gets the same, but I might work forty less days in, in my hire.
Right.
All right. And the final clarification, uh, deals with overtime and that's the incorporation of the language, employees will receive compensated leave time at a rate of one and one-half, one point five times in lieu of overtime for all hours worked over forty hours in a week. This replaces the language in red that you see.
All right, thank you very much, any questions?
When do we make this motion, do we need to highlight the few major changes?
The changes?
Okay, I, I think I'm prepared to do that, I think.
If you think you're prepared, we have no other questions or discussion on it, anybody? Nope? Go ahead and take a stab at it, Tracy.
All right, here we go, I'd like to make a motion, move forward on a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the modifications of all of the employee handbooks as presented, including the following changes. On page four, the admin handbook, so, under survivorship, should, shall now read, in the event of the retiree's death prior to exhaustion of this benefit, the district will continue its contributions in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder of the retiree's benefit. A surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue the benefit provided or until the spouse attains Medicare, Medicaid eligibility by payment of the premiums to the board subjects to the rules of the carriers. Also, under teaching staff handbook, page four, under contracts, it shall read, after September first, he, she shall forfeit four thousand dollars. And under the professional technical employees handbook, page three, under insurance, uh, needing to strike the word or under health and dental insurance.
I will second.
All right, I have a first by Tracy or motion by Tracy and a second by Ms. Higginbotham, any discussion? All right, we will vote on it. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes with the adjustments that Tracy has read. And are you going to share that verbiage, Tracy, with?
I can.
Is that okay, Meg?
Yeah. I have notes too, yep, we can cross-reference and watch the video.
Good deal, with that, I'll take one final motion.
A motion to adjourn.
Saga.
We'll put this one in the books at seven oh five.
And a vote.
What's that, you want to vote on it? Let's vote to adjourn. Any, in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we'll put it in the books.
What time?
Seven oh five still. Seven oh five still.
[Music]
We'll call the Germantown School District Board of Education meeting to order June tenth at seven eleven P M. Please stand if able for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. Item one A, official meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news media who have requested such notices, and to the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notices also been posted in schools throughout the district and on the Germantown School District website.
Item one B, Clerk Barney, roll call.
Ewer.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Barney's here. Loaf?
Here.
Medved?
Here.
Pollak?
Here.
Higginbotham?
Here.
Item two, approval of agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Pollak with the second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item three, reports, three A, district administrator update, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you. We officially concluded the twenty-three, twenty-four school year last Friday with a half-day. Kids went home, teachers went home, and summer has begun. Last week, and thank you to Mr. Ewer and Mr. Barney, you've joined us at each of the schools, and we provided service awards for employees at ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and those retiring. I didn't do the math, but it's well over a thousand years almost of service in, in the school district between all six of our buildings. And it was just great to, you know, honor those employees, those teachers, those aides, administrators, office staff, food service, some custodians for their service and dedication to our school district. So we're, we're excited to start summer work now, kind of drives me into my next topic, summer projects. And there's a lot of year-end reporting happening in every department in the next couple of weeks as the fiscal year closes out, as well as student data and other reports from each of the various departments. And then in our schools, now that everyone's gone, our summer buildings and grounds projects will kick off and get started there. But we do start summer school on Monday at Kennedy Middle School. So there's gonna be kids back in the buildings, as well as on teaching staff back as well. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate Cody Schmidt for winning the Division One Golf Championship. It's quite an honor to be the number-one golfer in Division One in the state of Wisconsin. He had that honor last week at the W A competition, so congratulations to Cody. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Item B, Germantown High School graduation. Apparently that's me. We were able, two Sundays ago, to honor the graduates of twenty-twenty-four. It was a pretty well-attended event, was exciting to see the entire community come out for that, and a lot of staff there. I just wanted to say thank you for the students who got themselves through it, and probably even more so maybe some of the staff and the families that helped get them through that or to that point. Everyone gets there on their own or in some form or fashion, but they got to the finish line, and it was exciting to see those smiles come across the stage and go down and greet their parents, so. Thank you for that. I will add, the following Thursday, we were able to have the promotion ceremony for the eighth grade. Not graduate, but promotions, at the fieldhouse for the first time. Two kind of fun things that came out of that and some really good feedback we heard from the communities. One, the whole class could be there at the same time, which was exciting. And two, it was a good welcome to their new facility and school, so. Exciting that we could change that process a little bit and offer that for those students. Item, we'll move on with that. Reports C, performing arts center update. Ms. Ellis. Ooh, she's quick today.
Hi, thanks. I am here today to give a P A C update. I will try to keep it quick. It's gonna be a review of kind of a few of the main points from the last season, some financial data, and then some of the topics and the preliminary ideas for next season. So this is a rough idea of the usage of the theater. So we're, you know, almost half and half with community events and rentals. A lot of high school use and, and school meetings and such, you can see that breakdown, moving on. I just broke this down for my sake, because it's starting to get really complicated, but we have a lot of major events. There are still many, many getting added. This is when I do all the rental contracts for next year, and I'm like, keep getting them. So we are getting very full, and this does not include, again, daytime use, daytime meetings. This is concerts, big recitals, outside rentals, technical rehearsals, so I'm here a lot. Next slide. This is a review of our high school drama season from the past years. You can see the attendance there. And, yeah, just a review of the three shows. We've been doing two plays and a musical every year. This past year was the first year we held the middle school musical here at the P A C. That's gonna happen again next year, so the kids really enjoyed that. We were able to carve out a section of time for them to be in here, so that was really great. This is just a really quick review of our outside groups. We are open for accepting rentals right now. We do have a lot. We do a lot of dance recitals, piano recitals. We have musicals coming in. We've got the Nutcracker that always comes in in December. Indian dance recitals, and of course, a community like the band, band dance program. And this is not everything. We do some other smaller rentals as well. This is a review of our community series events. We've been doing this to some degree for the few years. Obviously, COVID was kind of challenging, so the numbers are a little hard to sort of gather. I went ahead and made a graph of our attendance. I have been doing this on a very, very low budget as we've been trying to reach out and grow our, our local attendance for these events. The Live in the Lobby was our comedy show buffet. It was intended to be a more intimate event. It was local comedians, which was great, and I think the people that were there were very receptive to that event, so they were happy about that. We had the January Jam concert, which was some local bands donated their time to hold a performance here, and that was pretty successful. And we also held a multicultural festival, which had a whole bunch of student participation, which was just great to see. It was a fun night. There's lots of pictures online from that. So that was just a review of how that kind of all came together. That is all Fund Eighty community events that we host. Moving forward, we are trying to expand the P A C community series into a more robust, a more robust event season. So we have started a community advisory team, and so far, you can see the members listed up there. It is open to anyone that would like to participate. Please email me. We'd love to have you. But we are talking about a number of different events, and we are meeting again this week to hopefully finalize some things and look at some different options. So it's a really exciting time to be looking at all of those. And this is obviously a big increase in what we've done in the past, so we're very excited about that. This is my just really rough idea of P A C expenses and revenues. So you can see that rental revenue. We did have a really big renter that came in in the twenty-two, twenty-three season that didn't come back, but I actually have another one to replace them and several more adding on. So I think that number might actually be higher than what I have projected here for this year. And then the Fund Eighty costs increasing largely because we are hoping to have that big event season this year. We have this summer coming up. We have Ariscat's Kids, which currently has, I believe, twenty-eight students enrolled, which is fantastic. And we have Anastasia, which is geared towards our high school age. There's still enrollment open for that. I know we're looking for more kids to participate in the Anastasia camp. So if you know anybody, you do not need to be a Germantown resident. You can just go on to our ticket page and register, and we'd love to have you. It's gonna be a really great camp, and we're really looking forward to presenting that with our kids. We also have Family Film Fridays. We've been doing this for a long time. It's free movies and theater. You can come, you can bring snacks, you can buy snacks and concessions if you prefer. We have games in the lobby. And this is what we're presenting for the summer. There will also be more movie nights coming up in the winter as well. You may have saw when you walked in, we did get the piano approved. It is here. It's beautiful. We love it. Thank you to everybody that donated and made that possible. We also updated the keyboard sign in the lobby, if you wanna take a look at that. But yeah, we are really proud of this addition and really excited to use it again, use it next school year for the first time. Quick look at our volunteers. This facility couldn't run without all the volunteers that dedicate their time. Special shout-out to those folks up there who volunteered well above and beyond most of our regular people. But yeah, we ran with seventy-one volunteers this year, with seven-hundred-and-eighty-two total hours at least recorded. Sometimes people show up and help, which is great, but that's what I had in my log. And those are open to middle schoolers, high schoolers, and just community members. If you're looking for a way to stay active, you get to see a show for free, which is great. And then just some contact information for the theater. Our Facebook page is great, great way to find pictures and find out what's going on, but we also have the website, which is updated regularly as well. Any, any questions?
So the new piano is the one that's sitting in?
That is, that is the piano, yes.
I, the photo in here, it was on the stage for the photo?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, very good. I just wanted to make sure I sent the right photo out to the family.
Absolutely. We are building a protective box on the stage that it's gonna live in, that so it's, you know, can't be touched or messed with, except when it's being pulled out for approved use. But I thought everybody might wanna see it.
Did it make it in time for the middle school concerts?
It did not, and sadly, I found a, the new recommendation is they wanted to wait three weeks before it was tuned. So they didn't wanna play with an untuned piano, which is very reasonable. But it'll, it'll be ready for the next round of shows and talk.
We saw a social media post. Do we know who was playing it?
That was neat.
Fantastic. It was pretty good.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Item four, citizen comment. I do have one. Mr. Canestra, one of our staff. I can read all the instructions, or I think we know with one speaker, we have three minutes, and be nice-ish.
Yeah, hello. Jamie Canestra, teacher at Germantown High School, G E A representative today. Just wanna mention a few things. We kind of talked about teacher support, those type of things. And I guess one thing we're looking for sometimes to make us happy when it comes to we come to these meetings and we hear what's going on, maybe a little more teacher support from, let's see, people from above the teacher point of view. Some people to come and look at things from our side and actually state it out loud at the meetings, maybe our point of view a little bit more. Kind of example I have is really go think back to, let's say, the April Personnel Committee meeting, when you're presenting the new teacher comp model. What we're kind of looking for maybe when that stuff comes up, the new comp model, I mean, one of the goals is to increase teacher retention. Again, and that's been very important to everybody. It's good for us, it's good for you. I think that was a great start. When we're looking for teacher support, what I guess we wanna see, or maybe hear sometimes, is it's being presented. One thing being presented is there's gonna be no longer compensation for Bachelor plus fifteen or Bachelor plus thirty or Masters plus fifteen, Master plus thirty. It's kind of that time that it'd be nice if we had one person kind of speak up and say, with a goal of teacher retention, we're taking out areas of compensation. And that's kind of what we're looking for. And again, and then whoever's presenting it, they'll have a reason for it, and that'll sound good, everything will be fine. But I think that's something coming from above a teacher, it'd be nice to see, hey, this person's kind of on our side too. They're looking at things from a teacher's eyes, how it comes off from a teacher. And now what happens after that is fine, and it goes forward, everything's good. But I think that's one of the little things going forward, I think, can help with what, how we work with each other. I think knowing there's somebody saying, hey, and is that gonna help teacher retention? Somebody else will explain, somebody will talk, there'll be a conversation, and that's great. And then we feel like, hey, look, somebody up there is saying, is looking at this from our point of view. So that's kind of what I like to say is, is hopefully going forward, we'll get maybe a little more of that. Somebody kind of standing up and saying, hey, this is the teacher's look from it. Is this right? Is this wrong? And those things going forward would be nice. That's why I have to, thanks.
Thank you. Item five, consent agenda. I'll read, I'll read through them. You can hear a motion on that, and then we can have some discussion around if anything wants to get pulled out. So item five, consent agenda A, approval of May twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes, open session only of closed session meeting. B, approval of May twentieth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes, full board meeting. C, approval of May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four meeting minutes. D, approval of teacher resignations. E, approval of teacher contracts. F, approval of donations.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Mr. Barney, what's the motion? Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to hear a highlight of the donations if possible.
For sure. This evening, we have four donations. The first coming from MacArthur P T A for eight-thousand-eight-hundred-eighty dollars and forty-two cents for field trips for our first, second, third, fourth, and fifth graders at MacArthur. County Line P T A donated one-thousand-ninety-fifty-four dollars and five cents for field trips to kindergarten, first grade, and P E students. Brad Devnikka donated one-thousand-five-hundred dollars for transportation for G H S track activity. And Johnson's Nursery provided, donated two-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards the Germantown Girls Swim and Dive Team.
Thank you. Fantastic. It's amazing. I think every monthly you say it, but the amount of money that comes in in donations is impressive, to say the least. Mr. Noah, can you help us with D, approval of teacher resignations, and E, approval of teacher contracts?
Sure.
Personnel will probably touch on it, but we could hit those topics here.
Sure. In regard to teacher resignations, there are four resignations listed. This is a unique time in that these are, in the case of the first three resignations, these are regular contract, contracted teachers who are offered contracts for next year. Those contracts are due June fifteenth. those contracts are due June fifteenth, they've identified that they, um, are not interested in moving forward, so their contracts are sunsetting, the last one is, is a limited-term contract, um, which involved a resignation.
Of those four, do we have replacements, or we'll work through the natural process of the summer?
Uh, we will work through the natural process.
Okay, and E, approval of teacher contracts?
Yes, so teacher contracts, we have a number of them this evening, pull it up quickly. Um, many of these contracts are limited-term contracts that have rolled into regular contracts, so they're people who are now familiar faces in our district, which is really exciting for them to now be in regular sort of permanent, uh, kind of, kinds of roles. Um, I'll go through them, uh, with name, school, and position. First is Helen Hul- Hulsey, uh, Hulsey, MacArthur Elementary Art Teacher, Nicole Pinzer, Germantown High School Special Education Teacher, Annie Willbanks, Germantown High School English Teacher, Lucas Halasek, uh, Kennedy Middle School Seventh Grade Literacy Teacher, Michael Warren, Rockfield Elementary, Fourth Grade Teacher, Erin Hagan, Germantown High School Social Studies Teacher, Morgan Werkes, Germantown High School Special Education Teacher, Catherine Hannikins, Germantown School District Social Worker, Leah Knoff, MacArthur Elementary Kindergarten Teacher, Lindsay Bauer, MacArthur Elementary, it says ASL Teacher, which is an interpreter, um, and I'll point out that that is a role that we, um, have had, uh, and this was a contracted position that now becomes our position, so we're excited about that. Melissa Tackey, uh, eighth, uh, Kennedy Middle School Eighth Grade Language Arts, Joy Keagle, Rockfield Elementary, uh, four-K Teacher, Dylan Isle, uh, Germantown High School English Teacher, Morgan Inches, MacArthur Elementary, this is the second of our ASL positions, and and now both are contracted employees with Germantown, Patricia Bengston, Amy Bell Elementary, Third Grade Teacher, Paige Conney, Germantown School District Speech and Language Pathologist, Ava Conrad, Germantown School District School Psychologist, and Sam Schubering, Amy Bell Elementary Physical Education Teacher.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding consent agenda?
Just wanna make one note, I was following along as Mr. Noack was going through, I think Ian McIlvery got...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Accidentally, nope, skipped over.
Lot of names.
Germantown High School Special Education.
Right, Ian McIlvery is, um, a Special Education Teacher, Germantown High School, um, he was with us all year in a limited-term role, and now transitions into a regular, we're very happy for him.
Fantastic. Uh, any other discussion on consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item six, Finance Committee, Mr. Loes.
Yes, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening, full board item six A, Committee Meeting Update, uh, Brittany Altendorf asked, answered questions about the vouchers with, which, uh, Finance approved, uh, there were seven questions, it took quite a bit of time. Um, note that these questions are not a, let's stump our business manager type questions, it's just, they're just questions that if citizens were to read the vouchers and had questions, we're just picking up on things that citizens might see, um, and asking those questions ourselves up front. Next item was, uh, the Monthly Variance Report, and, um, I think the main takeaway there, while we covered everything, this'll just be the, uh, Cliff's Notes version for everything tonight, the full board was in attendance for the, uh, Finance Committee, uh, I think a, a big takeaway is we're still projecting that we will not have to borrow this summer for cash flow purposes, that's always good news that we don't have to pay interest on a short-term loan. Next item is, excuse me, full board item six B, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, excuse me, preliminary budget. Uh, the process of building the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget starts in January of twenty-twenty-four and concludes in October twenty-twenty-four at the annual meeting and budget hearing, so if you want the full version of this, you'll go to the, uh, video of Finance Committee for earlier this evening. Anyway, uh, we bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee to approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget.
Comes forward with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second? Is there any final discussion?
I think it's worth mentioning, there are quite a few, uh, spreadsheets in the Finance Committee material, and, uh, Brittany went through, uh, pretty much all of them, of course not every number, but, uh, went through quite a bit of the material, and, uh, I guess we'll leave it at that.
Fantastic, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hearing none, that passes.
Okay, next thing was, uh, full board item six C, uh, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five desktop and Chromebook replacement, uh, Jeff Crawford was absent this evening, excused, uh, Brittany Altendorf, uh, filled in for him. This covers six-hundred-and-fifty Asus CR eleven-hundred Chromebooks with a unit price of two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars with an additional Google Chrome Education License, unit price of twenty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents, and replacement of sixty-one HP four-hundred desktops for five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. So, the, uh, motion to approve, motion to move forward with a positive recommendation to the full board to approve the purchase of six-hundred-and-fifty Chromebooks from BDJ Tech for one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents, and sixty-one desktops from TKK Electronics for thirty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars totaling two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars and fifty cents plus financing charged to the appropriate capitalization and lease accounts in the general fund.
That comes forward with a positive recommendation, any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
And that was it for the Finance Committee this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Loes.
You're welcome.
Item seven, Personnel Committee.
The Personnel Committee met tonight, June tenth, twenty-twenty-four, uh, items on the agenda began with reports and updates, all covered by Mr. Mike Noack, uh, the committee did not come, have to come forward with any actions or recommendations on those, and just previously before this, Mr. Noack spoke to teacher resignations and contracts, um, there's no unfinished business, and new business was pretty much occupied by employee handbook updates, some of them were single word, like, being dropped or added, uh, along with lengthy paragraphs that I would suggest that anybody interested in seeing or hearing him review the, uh, YouTube video covered, and, um, is there a way for people to get those recommendation, uh, those changes, the handbooks that they requested, it's in the notes?
Yeah, I think it would, we don't republish, and it's an internal document.
And we had two major updates that Mr. Pollak read in the motion when it came forward for approval, um, has that been updated yet, or?
I have not had time between...
I didn't expect you to, so what are we doing in case?
I will do that this evening.
Could I have Tracy reread it then, just so we know, or?
I think they could refer back to, there was a, uh, change with language related to survivorship and post-employment benefit, um, delineate spouses or dependents versus the actual employee upon death.
So that was coming forward to the board for approval, for the positive recommendation. And that's it?
Do you have to do?
Well, that's what I was just asking.
Oh, that's what you, okay, that has to be read.
Well, that's what I was asking, so can Tracy re, do you have the verbiage, Tracy?
Sure.
That's what I was saying, is the motion came forward with a positive recommendation, but with the updates Tracy has in.
So, yep, so the positive recommendations coming forward, here's the, the detail on the changes that were made during the meeting, uh, page four, the Admin Handbook, under Survivorship, uh, shall now read, "In the event of the retiree's death prior to exhaustion of this benefit, the district will continue its contributions in the same manner to the surviving spouse for the remainder of the retiree's benefit. A surviving spouse shall be permitted to continue the benefit provided or until the spouse attains Medicare/Medicaid eligibility by payment of the premiums to the board, subject to the rules of carriers." There's an additional update under the Teaching Staff Handbook, page four, under Contracts, uh, the original said after September first, he/she shall forfeit two-thousand dollars with four-thousand in parentheses, it shall read four spelled out thousand dollars. And lastly, under Professional Technical Employees Handbook, page three, under Insurance, there's some verbiage in there under Health and Dental Insurance that had, uh, was still in there as far as professional technical employees averaging at least thirty-five hours per week, or, there was a need to strike the word or, so those were the changes that were made during the meeting that are being brought forward with that positive recommendation.
So those changes to the Employee Handbook come forward with a positive recommendation from the committee to the full board, does not require a second, is there any further Me, sorry, uh, I'd just add, um, specifically, I think Mr. Loes and Mr. Brown have both alluded to it, we have the committee meetings where most of this work is done, there was a lot of discussion, and sometimes, um, when we're talking policy or handbooks, language gets changed during those conversations, um, so it's not reflected in this packet that was put together in accordance with, uh, published times, uh, those, those conversations are recorded, that's why we record all of our committee meetings, and people can take their time to view that at a later date, to kinda understand what we just talked about more, we were all here for that conversation, um, and participated in it even though some of us aren't on that committee, we appreciate that, Mr. Brown. So take, take your time, if you have any questions on that, please refer back to that committee meeting once it gets published, um, and the, actually, the language that was initially intended to be is in this packet that you would see attached to this meeting, but some of that has been updated through that conversation, which is what they just discussed, and that will be, um, updated prior to the publishing of the handbooks. So, with that, if there's no other discussion, came with a positive recommendation, does it need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Item eight, new business, I'm sorry, you didn't have any?
Nope.
Okay, item eight, new business discussion, uh, eight A, Discussion Action to Approve the twenty-four, twenty-five Elementary KMS GHS Student Handbooks, Dr. Chris Reuter.
So I started the meeting off by reporting that the school year just ended, however, we're in the process of finalizing online verification that will take place at the end of July, um, so with the timing of tonight's board meeting, we're bringing forward the elementary, the middle school, and high school student handbooks, you'll see that the elementary and high school have no proposed changes, if you remember back to last year when these were po- proposed, there was massive changes to all of our handbooks, um, the only changes that are being recommended tonight are at Kennedy Middle School, related to the new bell schedule, some technical word changes with Gold Office/Blue Office versus Main Office and Student Services, um, so that there's a true designation of what the purpose of those offices are, um, the change in the class dismissal time to two forty-five, I believe from two forty-three because of the new bell schedule, and then, um, language related to water bott- bottles in classrooms. Nothing earth-shattering this evening, but technical changes that, um, Mrs. Guerin is recommending this evening.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the proposed Germantown School District's Handbooks for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, and Mr. Barney with the second, any discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Eight B, Discussion Action to Approve the KMS GHS Co-Curricular Handbooks, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Thank you, Dr. Nertl cannot be here because of, uh, planned vacation this evening, so I am presenting, um, the, similar to the school handbooks, the Co-Curricular Handbook, um, edits and modifications, as this would be part of the registration process where families of students who are in co-curriculars, um, would sign off on this, on these handbooks, just like our student handbooks, in that online verification process. Um, I am projecting a document that's not in the board packet that did, um, provide some additional edits, it's also on the large screen up here, Heather's projecting, um, related to, um, the very first edit for both KMS and GHS, the Purpose of Offerings, where there's an actual piece that we're asking our parents to engage in when it comes to, um, parents and co-curriculars, the, in the packet, what's published has been revised still today, um, with some further language, um, we're asking that this, that I'm presenting right now or projecting be, um, supplement or take the place of what's in the packet, um, to provide almost a code of conduct for our parents, um, as participants in their child's co-curricular careers, both at KMS and GHS, we hold our student athletes and, um, at, uh, club participants to a code of conduct, and we would ask the same of our parents about providing, um, positive support to their child as well as the team, and if there is concern about, um, officiating, the coaching, the advising, that they do that in a respectful manner and outside of the actual activity that's taking place, and also be a good role model, um, towards their child to set that positive example attitude and effort, um, for not only their son or daughter, but also their teammates and the opposing team. Um, we know that in high school and middle school athletics, as well as clubs and activities, um, it's, it's high stakes, right? We have, we have very competitive teams here, um, and we play in a very competitive conference, and everyone wants to win, but at the same time, we need to model as the adults also good sportsmanship and provide process when it comes to, um, questioning maybe coaching or the refereeing or whatever it might be in that given situation. So that is a major add that you would see to the handbook this evening for both middle and high school, that language be, would, uh, mirror both, and also gives us something to fall back on to when we have to address issues, um, that do come up with parents, um, related to our co-curriculars, when we have over eighty percent of our high school participating in that, that's a large parent base as well. Um, the other minor changes relate to, um, language provided by the WIA, WIA, as well as, um, replacement costs and transportation, we did strike out cheerleading at both levels as we have not run a cheerleading program in years, we have not had anyone that wants to participate and/or coach, so we're removing that currently as an offering, if there is in the future interest in that, then we would add that back into our, our handbook language around cheerleading. So with that, I ask that, um, you approve with the modification presented here, I apologize that I did not get to you in, in print sooner, but, um, there was some more language we wanted to add today.
Uh, similar to what the discussion was in the hand, uh, Employee Handbooks, uh, this is modification to the proposed initial modifications, and it's highlighted in green with the red red action there. Dr. Reuter spoke to some of the needs behind that, I think it also gives us the ability with some of the events, the events, but some of the scenarios we've seen play out with visiting, um, schools, uh, families, uh, within our buildings, and some of the actions that we've had to take, and Mr. Nertl's seen, seen on sidelines, um, we can kind of take this document to those districts and say, this is what we hold our parents accountable to, um, we would appreciate if you did the same when they visited our facilities, and this does extend when our, when our parents are representing their students at external facilities, so. Thank you for working on those changes and updates. I will hear a motion.
A motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five KMS and GHS co-curricular handbooks and addendums as presented.
Second. Mr. Higginbotham with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the section to the parent, I was very impressed with it when I read it. It's a section that I don't think we should need, but I think in this day and age, we need it, so thank you for including that, and looks good.
Portions of this were taken from a presentation that's done for parents for co-curriculars, but this formalizes it more, and you're signing off on your child's co-curricular handbook as the guardian or parent, and you have expectations as well, because not everyone necessarily saw that presentation. It's a more formal approach.
Yeah, it's nice. I think we've all seen cases that have made the local news or the national news, and I don't think we want to make the local news, much less the national news either, so this is a good, good addition here, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. C, eight, C, discussion action to approve summer IEP diagnostic contracts. Ms. Crystal Callen.
Yeah, so the, the staff members listed here for the summer diagnostics are speech pathologists, school psychologists, special education teachers, and regular education teachers that are mostly actively involved in ongoing evaluations that have already been set in motion, those timelines have started.
So this evening you're looking for the approval for them to continue that work into the summer, correct?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Callen, would you define IDEA for the group, as outlined in your report? What that acronym stands for?
It's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act.
So in order to comply with the federal law, we're seeking the approval of additional hours for these listed staff at that, those, not to exceed those dollar amounts, to finalize testing and IEP work to meet with families to determine placement for next fall.
With that, I'll hear a motion. Motion to approve the summer IEP diagnostic contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Eight, D, discussion action to approve super, discussion action to approve the supplemental teacher contract. Ms. Crystal Callen and Mr. Mike Noack.
Yeah, so the supplemental teacher contracts, again, it is a combination of school counselors, school social workers, school psychologists, and depending on that, that role or their role, it's additional contractual hours that are needed to do, kind of, again, depending on their role, the counselors to work on scheduling. Susan Bass, as you can see, is the master scheduler, so she puts together the whole thing. The school social workers work on logging for McKinny Vento students, creating presentation for teachers and staff once school starts, and, you know, finishing up some of the tasks from the school year. Again, they submit a list of their proposed activities that, that we review, and then they keep track of those hours.
We review their, which would be post-July one work, that's summer-related, meeting with families, working with individuals, individual cases. Something that Mr. Noack and I have talked about in the future is rolling in these unique cases, which is common in other school districts, is rolling their number of hours with that dollar amount into their actual contract. So if I'm someone who has an additional four days, that would be a hundred and ninety-four day contract for them next year with this per diem rate, so we're not doing this separate piece, but those are all vetted through pupil service, human resources, myself, to determine what they're requesting is applicable for summer work. And they are unique extenuating circumstances, that's where you see mostly pupil service employees on here, because it's just work that has to get done for reporting purposes, legal compliance, as well as unique situations. Mrs. Callen referenced McKinny Vento, that is homeless families, and working with them for transition plans that has to be done in the summer. We can't wait till school starts or the contracted days start.
You're not asking for that change now, you're just asking for the approval of these additional hours of pay?
And then next year, when we reissue teacher contracts, we'll look at putting it actually in their contract language, a hundred and ninety days under the regular contract with an additional four days with adjusted salary for that, versus bringing unique ones, and then we can pre-plan sooner with those discussions.
I think in two for the employee, it helps them understand what, what we're looking for in that extended period, which is part of their work contract, which is similar as administration is a different workday contract.
Correct.
In certified staff, but it, it provides, you know, that clarity going into it, which can only help.
Yeah, we, at the bottom, we just wanted to note that Catherine Heineken's is the school social worker. We added on additional days in this last week because of the time that she started. She, I believe she started in October, she didn't have those hours, but. Yeah, the person that she replaced was approved for those hours, and the work is still, still there, needs to be done.
Above this eighty you're asking for, or this eighty is that?
She's listed twice.
Yeah, she's, we just made a special note at the bottom just to approve days this week.
The first, on the first page, that would be post-July one, but Mrs. Callen's asking for additional days.
I didn't see. Keep scrolling. Sorry, that's my fault. Thank you. I will hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five supplemental teacher contracts as presented.
Second.
Mr. Brown with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? I think both this and the last motion are kind of examples of what continues, the work that continues through the summer past our school days, and a lot of this is coming out of that office, in your office. I do want to take this time to thank you for stepping into that interim role for us over the last year. I know it's not easy to do, but it means that probably more than I know that it's not that easy, but it's appreciated that you were able to get in there and fill that role, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. E, discussion and action to approve the extended school year contracts. Ms. Crystal Callen.
So, yeah, so the last extended school year contracts that we're looking for approval on are for two different students that was deemed necessary per their IEP that they continue in what we call extended school year, so they get usually between ten to fourteen additional hours during the summer, and we want to prevent that regression of skills, so there's been a proven track of regression during an extended break. So this is the, the three teachers, one is a sign language interpreter, one is a special education teacher, and one is a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing, so specific to student needs, but work that, again, like you were talking about before, it needs to be extended a bit over the summer.
With that, I'll hear a motion. Motion to approve the extended school year contracts as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Barney with the motion, Mr. Brown with the second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious how it works, does the teacher come in midsummer then to do this work, or?
Yeah, actually, there's a combination, so some go to the, actually, some go to the home. In one, I think in one case, the parents are also learning sign language, so it's, you know, to benefit the student and the parents, but most of them will come into Kennedy during our summer school program and meet with students there. They, they kind of plan it with the families.
Okay, very good.
Okay, I missed one. I still mean all the things I said before. Any further discussion? See, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. F, discussion and action to approve overnight field trip request, HOSA.
Thank you. The HOSA Nationals, which is the Future Health Professionals, otherwise formerly known as the Health Occupational Students of America, but now they just go by HOSA, it's not an acronym anymore, the name for future reference, will be held June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth at the George R. Brown Convention Center in Houston, Texas. Three students and one advisor will be attending the Nationals. These students qualified at the state leadership, at state leadership to have this opportunity. I believe when we shared a video of our academic and career planning, students talking about that previously, Ms. Fisher brought that from high school, one of our qualifiers here is the state president as well, so I mean, we've got some great representation that should do well at Nationals. This cost is approximately four thousand nine hundred eighty-one dollars and forty-five cents. All student fundraising, parents and/or donations will pay for registration, transportation, and lodging for the students and the advisor, so we're asking for approval for that overnight travel request tonight for the three students and the one advisor to, for travel to Houston, Texas.
I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for three students and one advisor to travel to Houston, Texas from June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, to attend the ILC HOSA Nationals.
Second. Mr. Pollak with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second. Any discussion?
And we'll update you on the results of that at a future board meeting.
Fantastic. Seeing no further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. G, discussion and action to approve overnight field trip GHS band, Dr. Chris Reuter.
Awesome. Mr. Bell, would you want to come up and say a little bit about this? I saw you sneaking around. Yeah, so Mr. Bell has brought forward tonight, asking that the Germantown High School Warhawk Band, which has been invited to perform in, I'll wait for him to name, where this performance is, in Spain at a parade, December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five through January sixth, twenty-twenty-six.
This would be a return to international travel for band programs. We have not, we were scheduled to go to Prague in twenty-twenty-one, and obvious reasons why we did not make that trip, and as international trips within the band world have come back. The Spain trip is a, the highlight performance is in the Night of Kings Festival Parade in Spain. As the three kings come through on January fifth, they bring the gifts for the kids. This is our second time being invited to this parade, and it was one of the most fantastic events I've ever been a part of when we traveled there in.
Twenty sixteen. Sixteen.
Sixteen. And just an outstanding performance, and it lines up to, I believe the fifth is a Monday, so that you have to go, the parade is on the fifth, and it leans us to missing fewer days of school because of calendar. There will be travels to Segovia, Toledo, and performances in both of those places as well for the band students and the parents that choose to travel with us.
Fantastic. Thanks for providing, it's an amazing trip, to say the least, that's fantastic. Do you get a motion on that? I'll hear a motion on that, sorry.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for one hundred and seventy students, chaperones, and parents along with two advisors to travel to Madrid, Spain from December thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five through January sixth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
Mr. Pollak with the motion, Ms. Higginbotham with the second. Any discussion? Yes. I don't think I've ever seen an overnight travel request that's approaching six hundred eighty thousand dollars.
More than a half a million dollars.
And normally we would ask for them to share the stuff, but I follow the band on Facebook and they always share pictures, so.
Yeah, good, I look forward to seeing pictures and videos from the trip.
And if you'd like to come and play, like you did this past year before you went to DC, that's, the December board meeting would be a great practice. Verify with Heather first, we're really busy in the PAC.
I want to go back to high school.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Mr.